We're joining us online. I'm Juan Castillo. I'm a member of the editorial board at The Statesman. Joined by my colleagues, Manny Garcia, another member of the board and the executive editor, and Bridget Grummet, also a member of the board. We've been meeting for the past couple of weeks to discuss various props, prop items on the May 1 ballot. Today, we'll be talking about Prop C, which would allow the city council to establish a new supervisor for the Office of Police Oversight. With us today is council member Greg Gassar, who led the push to place Prop C on the ballot. And we'll start by asking you, what problem is Prop C intended to solve? And how would it work?
Well, first, thank you all for having me here. The propositions on the ballot are so critical for determining the future of the city. And so often, not enough people vote in these low may turnout elections. And so people really understanding what's on the ballot is critical. The challenge that Prop C is trying to solve is a challenge that Austin and cities across the country have been grappling with since time immemorial. We give so much responsibility to cities and to police officers to be able to use force and to take someone's freedom away and handcuff them if necessary. And that huge responsibility requires real transparency and oversight. And so our city has been working for years to improve our model of police oversight. And especially here in the last year, there has been a nationwide call to make sure that we actually reduce force, that we increase transparency, and that we hold cities and police officers accountable anytime that we do something wrong in this area where we have so much responsibility. But Prop C isn't the beginning of that work. In fact, it's been over the course of the last few years that the city looked at the deficiencies that we had within our police oversight system, where we strengthened what was once called the Office of Police Monitor into a new Office of Police Oversight. We gave more responsibility and more powers to that office. And now Proposition C would be about taking that to the next level. Because currently, the Office of Police Oversight reports to the city manager, just like the police chief does. So the Office of Police Oversight is a part of the same administration that it is trying to hold accountable. And if we want to have an Office of Police Oversight that structurally can say and do whatever it thinks is true, that follows down a path in the interest of justice and transparency, even if that might be at odds with a city administration, then it's important to provide that organization with more independence. So Proposition C, what it does is it starts a process of saying, the Office of Police Oversight can be more independent if the council and the community wants it to become more independent. It doesn't say exactly how to do that. It just actually says that the city, the barrier in the city charter, which currently says that something like the Office of Police Oversight has to report to the city manager, that that barrier is taken away, and it allows for the Office of Police Oversight to become more independent. And there's other cities like Seattle and New Orleans that have more independent structures. And we could actually put one of those kinds of structures in place. If Proposition C passes, then we can have a community conversation about how to do that. There's one other last bit of Proposition C and problem that it helps solve, which is sometimes in really contentious negotiations between the city and organizations like the Police Association, things like oversight sometimes become sort of a football, they get kicked around. And we want to really actually protect the Office of Police Oversight long term. In recent Police Association negotiations, sometimes there were contentions about whether that office could exist or not when we were still in protracted negotiations. And we don't want that. And so I think having it laid out clearly in the charter, that the Office of Police Oversight is going to exist, that it is going to be in charge of and responsible for transparency and accountability within the city, I think that's an important way to cement that office. And then the more, the other really critical part is to give the community the ability to say, and we want to make that office more independent of its administration, so that it can, it can not hold back. And even if it's something that city council members or the head of city administration might, you know, disagree with, it's important for us to try to build in that kind of independence.
And how independent is our current system now? Is that something that you feel is, it's not independent and therefore it troubles you?
Currently, we have, in my experience as a city council member, such an excellent head office officer of police oversight. Director Musketin is somebody that I personally admire and who I believe takes real risks by telling the truth in public at council meetings. And, and I appreciate that. But I also believe that we can't just rely on an extraordinary person to take this, to take this on, because even extraordinary people in difficult circumstances, if they're in a structure that hasn't worked best, it doesn't, it doesn't help them. And so I want to make sure that, that we set up a system so that, that the Office of Police Oversight can always be as independent as possible. I think even right now, in the last year that we've experienced, if the Office of Police Oversight, for example, had too scathing of a critique of what happened to the protesters during the protests about the killings of George Floyd and others, that it could be interpreted as a critique of their own city management and administration that, that I don't think acted quickly enough to change police chiefs. If we have a more independent Office of Police Oversight, then that question wouldn't even come up. So for example, right now, we have a city auditor that releases audits regularly critiquing the city administration, because it is her job to be that transparent. But under the current system, even with an extraordinary officer of police oversight, there, the question could still exist about what the relationship is like between her and her fellow administrators in the same administration. So those questions don't come up as much in the Office of City Auditor, because she audits an administration that she is not a part of. So I guess what it comes down to is, I think that there would be times, if we had had this structure in the past, where the Office of Police Oversight might have more quickly and more quickly released reports and not have minced words. I think we're lucky right now to have Director Musketin, and I believe that Spencer Crunk does care quite a bit about police oversight, I mean, he helped establish this new office. But it shouldn't rely on people. We should try to have great people in a system that makes good sense.
So is not mincing words not part of the, and that's poor grammar, is not mincing words not part of the current job description?
It's part of the current job description, but if I were to get, you know, if, if you're a part of an administration, I think that you sometimes have to pick your battles within that administration, right? You might have to say, look, I already had this report that called for a lot of change last month. And are they going to get tired if I bring another one this month? Maybe I need to think about it or wait till next month. That's something that I think is just natural within a structure when, when you are critiquing your own, your own boss essentially in some cases. And if you are not in a position where you aren't critiquing your own boss as the Office of Police Oversight, but rather your job is just to release critiques when they come in, I think it will be, I think it's a better structure. I think it will be easier. I think it won't require people to be so extraordinary as to essentially critique their own boss and their own administration as their job, month after month, if that makes sense. So yes, it's part of the job description, but I want to make the job description align with the structure.
Has Chaz Moore joined the call? Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, good.
Hey, Chaz.
Hey, how are you all?
Good, thank you. Thank you for joining us. So I had a question for you, I think, here. Should the city manager be taking a more active role to ensure that APD is responsive to the Office of Police Oversight?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I absolutely think so, you know? The whole reason that we advocated for, and Greg, along with, I think, most of his colleagues, if not all, wanted for the oversight of the, the Police Monitor's office, the OPO, was to ensure transparency and assure, you know, this, this autonomy for that office. And it really, not only works, but I think it works as efficiently as possible if there is dialogue, if there is some response from the police department in a timely manner, right? Like if, if Farah or whoever is running it, you know, office, you know, years down the line, is trying to correspond with the police department about things that they need to do better, or discrepancies, or things that she finds that are really problematic, you know, the only way we know if they are actually tackling those issues is if they respond, right? So if, if they're not taking that, that lead of responding in a timely manner, then it's, it's really hard to gauge if they're listening to or taking seriously anything that the Office of Police Oversight is sending their way. So, you know, I hope moving forward that the city manager is going to be proactive in making sure that the police department does respond to the OPO.
Okay, and we should let our viewers know that you were part of the, Mr. Moore, you were part of the Police Oversight Advisory Working Group in 2018, that was looking for ways to improve police oversight. So how about, how might things be different if the Office of Police Oversight answered to someone else, in your view?
Well, you know, I, I don't know if, and I'm trying to get my camera situated, if, I'm not sure that it changes the responsibilities or the effectiveness of the OPO. But I do know, at least in my opinion, because we haven't seen this play out yet, if, if the OPO has a chance to respond to city council and the mayor, it's more opportunity, in my opinion, for the public to then go to those folks and ask for updates and ask for, you know, you know, any correspondence that the OPO is having with them, because, you know, the mayor and city council, they have to answer to us, because we're the constituents. As opposed to the city manager, you know, this guy, you know, or this person only really has to answer to, to city council, you know? So I think it removes that barrier of us going to city council, then city council going to the city manager. Now, you know, the people that want to know updates and get feedback from the OPO can just go directly to city council. I don't know if Greg agrees with that, but, but that's, that's how I understand that.
I think one way also that I think about it is, think about, you know, the OPO serves more like an auditor than like an administrative department, right? And so if we thought about what if the city auditor was a part of the city manager's chain of command, I think that reporters at The Statesman and people in the community, if they read a report that said, these things are being done particularly well, and maybe these things need to change, I think people, be they in the press or in the public or council members, might ask, you know, well, if you're more of an auditor function, but you work for the folks that you're auditing, could that not present potential conflicts? And so I think what would be different, you know, it would make sense that you would migrate that function out. And I, so I think what would also be different is you could have, you know, like I said, we would feel less, there would be less pressure to mince words, and I think that there could be increased public trust in whatever reports come out, whichever way they come out, understanding that it is more independent of the city administration that they're tasked with overseeing.
There are obviously more contentious props on the, on the ballot, like the homeless camping ban, et cetera, but, and this might be one of the lesser known ones. How are you getting the word out? And what's your sense of a community support for this Prop C?
Yeah, there's a brand new organization to get the word out about the election, Austin for Police Oversight, and it filed its paperwork last week. And there'll be some, some digital campaign work to make sure that we get the word out online to people about, about the proposition. Generally, in my communications with people, it's been, it's been positive, because I think folks understand how important it is to try to have independence in oversight. And also that I think that people want to see us continue down a path of improving oversight in this city. The main critique that I've heard has been about timing. You know, this, this proposition came up pretty quickly. And I think that that critique would certainly make, if we had put in the proposition that the Office of Police Oversight shall now answer to the council, or that the Office of Police Oversight shall now answer to a citizen board, or a mix of those, and we had just put that immediately on, I think that that would be, you know, that could be a real challenge in passing it, of folks saying, well, why did you pick the structure so quickly? That's part of why the proposition is written, to say, it removes the barrier towards us coming up with that system, but it doesn't dictate the new independent form. It just says we can have a more independent form, and we can all talk about that. And so that's been something, you know, I think when folks hear that, that we didn't rush a new form onto the ballot, but instead, we just said, we don't want to have to wait two more years to even have this conversation. This is about creating that possibility. Then I think generally, folks have said, okay, that one sounds good. Let's talk about the more contentious ones then.
And how would the definition of that new structure be outlined? Would that be the city council's job?
Correct. That would have to be outlined in ordinance. So I would anticipate we would get people from the working group together, from the citizen review panel, all folks in the community, to have that conversation. And I would expect that that would take multiple months before the city council would vote on anything.
You mentioned this came together rather quickly. What's genesis of this? Is this sort of an outgrowth of the police and the Black Lives Matter protest and how that was handled?
I think that, well, we've been having the conversation about how to improve OPO over time, and on the list of potential best practices, we've seen from other municipalities, independence has just been on that list, further independence has been on that list, but it's always been something that we couldn't do, given the charter. And so really, the timing answer, the honest timing answer is, community petitioners, both at, it's not impacted by Proposition B, because that's in ordinance, but community petitioners at APR and at the Firefighters Association brought forward charter amendment petitions. And as soon as those were validated, then it became clear that that thing that had been sitting on the shelf for improved oversight, which has been on the shelf since, frankly, since Chaz was on that working group, suddenly, we had to put it on now, because there is a two-year prohibition on another charter amendment. So, so frankly, this has been on the list of things to work on for quite some time now, but it, but putting it on the ballot was really triggered by the state law requirement that when the firefighter's petition got validated, then this is the, this is the only legal opening for starting this conversation. That makes sense?
Yes. Any other questions from members of the board?
Yeah, and I guess maybe this kind of plays into what you're saying, but when we went from the Office of Police Monitor to the Office of Police Oversight, why was this aspect not addressed then? I mean, is it because of the language that's currently in the charter that basically said such a thing can only be under the city manager? And help me understand why this wasn't addressed at that transition point.
Correct. The charter currently says that delineates which departments must report to the city manager, to the head of the administration. And so the, so the Office of Police Oversight would have no other option but to report that way. And so, you know, the charter delineates that the city auditor, the municipal court clerk, the municipal judges, that are more independent functions. So we couldn't deal, contend with that then, because we needed the change in the charter to get that started. And so now we have the opportunity to change this in the charter, which creates the possibility of us actually working on this. If Proposition C were not put on the ballot, or if Proposition C fails, then it might have to be multiple years before we can have this conversation again.
My question is, thank you for joining us. Based on your opening statements, is the current structure pulling punches? And the reason I ask is because you said that, you know, as the current director has testified, he's given a speech, he testified to put out a report at great risks. So at great risk, I'm trying to find out, so what's, what's the risk? If a report is too scathing, and three, about picking your battles, so that leads me to believe that, is this rooted in fact? Is this is in fact what's happening?
You know, I, here's the, I think, let's, if we were to use the counter factual, right, where you would have, for example, the city auditor in this, inside of the city administration, I believe that she would still do her job the very best that she could. And I think that Director Musketin does her job the very best that she can. I do believe that it would be different if she were more independent. So what you're asking me is, is she doing something, is she doing something wrong? Or is she doing something negative? And my answer is no, because I think that she's doing absolutely, I think she's doing absolutely a great job. Do I believe that if she was more independent, that, that she would not, that, that it might be different, that she might be able to do an even better job, that she might be able to not have to, that it might not be ever in the back of her mind, how is this going to play out with the administration? The answer is yes. So I guess, Manny, I'm not trying to skirt around your question, I just don't want to be misinterpreted as saying that she isn't stepping up and doing really great work. If you're the police oversight officer, you get a lot of scrutiny, you, you know, there are grievances filed against you. It's not an easy job. And so I don't want what I've said to come off as, that she isn't, that she is, that she is holding back. What I do believe is that somebody that wasn't as excellent as Director Musketin might hold back more, and that if you have a great Office of Police Oversight and you're more independent, then I think, then I think that that structure will allow you to go way, way further, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but, I mean, you're trying to create a greater, greater firewall.
Yeah.
It sounds like what you're trying to do, create a greater firewall. And I would also put out there for you, whichever one you want to answer, but aren't you creating a, in some ways, a bigger problem? And I've covered both.
Yeah.
Whether it's city manager and whether it's through elected officials, but putting it under the, under the elected body, you're putting that job into a position where there's could, where there's possibility of a lot more political influence. Elected officials come and go. Oftentimes, they have to solicit donations from different stakeholders, and it's a, you know, I don't like this person in this job. The budgets are set by, by the council and so forth. So I want to find out how, what, how do you create, how is there an added protection for this position when you're putting it in the hands of, of the elected body?
Yeah, I want to talk through both of these things here. One thing, firewall question, I haven't fully figured out the metaphor, because some part of it is almost like an editorial board and reporters firewall component here too. But on the elected officials appointment question, we aren't determining with Prop C that it's going to report to us just like the city auditor. We could come up with something different, and there might be good reason to, where it might be a mix, say, a mix of elected officials and some of the citizen review board. We can go look at, in New Orleans, it's entirely a citizen board. In Seattle, that Office of Inspector General reports to the council, which is separate from their mayor, which, and so we can go look at all of those models and try to answer that question you brought up, Manny, of what's the best protection? The city auditor cannot simply be fired one day by the city council. There's a term set for your city auditor, so we could consider protections like that. But everything I just discussed, none of it's on the table, because right now, the charter just says, you report to the city manager, and that's it. The last thing I'll say is that ultimately, it is tasked with overseeing the police department. And so I think that there is something to not being in the same organizational hierarchy as the thing you are tasked with, with critiquing, because ultimately, the job of the council is also to oversee that. And even if, sorry, last thing I'll say, is, let's say that you are the Office of Police Oversight and you report to the city council. Even if seven or eight council members don't like a report, if, if suddenly, that means that it's going to be redone, or rewritten, or slowed down, it just takes one council member to raise their hand and say, no, that this needs to change, and everybody would know about it. A little bit different, as we've seen in other cities like Chicago, say, where video footage and other things can get buried so much, because really, one person at the top of an administration can, can hide things. So all that's to say, I, of course, obviously, you've invited me to, for this reason, I favor a shift in a system, but like you, I'm not convinced that there is one system that is the best, and this creates the opportunity for us to seek that system out.
Yeah, and, you know, I just, I just want to add to that. I think, I think what Greg just said is, is kind of like the meat of it all, right? Like the way it's written out through city charter, it's very, you know, this is what it is, but if Prop C passes, we have some room to be able to begin to mow this to a better model, and hopefully, you know, like a model that becomes best practice for the cities throughout the country. And, you know, another thing I want to highlight that Greg said, which is really, really, really important, and from my perspective, is that it's, it's quite difficult, even for a lot of people that are not policy walks, like, you know, myself or Greg, you know, it, with the moment you explained that the oversight entity is also in the same hierarchy as the police department itself, people just, you know, that, that can create room for people to, to not believe that this thing is actually going to be able to do its job, right? Because Farah has to share, you know, the, the same legal expertise and folks as the police department, right? So, and, and how do you get those people to, you know, uphold what Farah is saying, but also then, because part of their job, in, in, in lack of better terms, is to protect the police department, right? But now Farah and the OPO is over here, it's own independent thing, and yes, we can figure out all the other stuff to make it as safe and protected as need be, but I really think, just making it clear to folks that this is its own independent thing, that's going to be able to independently do its job, I, I think that trust is needed from the community, so more people can buy into the oversight office and, and really, really utilize that office to the best of its ability. So I think I agree with Greg that, you know, we don't know what this is going to look like in the end, but I think Prop C gives us the runway to start reimagining, because, you know, that's the 2020 and 2021 word of the year in Austin, as we reimagine everything else. It gives us a chance to reimagine what this oversight entity can look like as well. So, yeah, just wanted to highlight some of those things that Greg said.
Yeah, you want to create a model of trust. It's part of the whole thing, it's all around credibility and trust, independence. They all go hand in hand.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Chaz, is there? Yeah, I was just going to ask Chaz if there's any, any particular incident that you can think of, or situation where you think things might have turned out differently if there had been greater independence for the Office of Police Oversight? And I know there's been a lot of praise for the, the job that Farah's been doing, certainly, but do you see situations where maybe stronger independence would have helped her in some way?
You know, I, I really can't speak for Farah, and I haven't heard anything that, that has come out of her administration, but I can tell you, from talking to that, that has come out of her administration, but I can tell you, from talking to, you know, OPMs, you know, Office of Police Monitors of the past, it was very difficult to just get things done, because it was no independence, right? Like, the police department, the police union just did not cooperate, because they didn't have to. And so, you know, recently, we came along with other folks that have been fighting for these changes in the oversight model here, we're starting to see, you know, and, and one thing I have to give Chief Manley, even though, you know, our, our bromance came to a, a, a very fatal ending at the end of it all, but, you know, I think he, at times, was more communicative with Farah than probably any other police chief would have been with the oversight model. But it was still some lags there to where, you know, Farah may give him something in February, then he gets back to her in June, right? And it's just like, I think those are the type of things that makes, you know, the Office of Police Oversight job difficult, and, and I think those are some of the things that we're trying to fix with Prop C if it passes. And again, you know, I, I just think if we're talking about oversight of the police department, you know, somebody that's been around the country to conferences to talk about this, it is best practice for this body to be its own independent thing, as far away from any bureaucratic system that is aligned with the police department. So, you know, again, we, we, because we haven't done it yet here in Austin, and I think anywhere in Texas, it's going to be something new, and we're going to have to learn the ropes as we go. But, you know, just knowing that we have the potential to practice, you know, the, the best practice, which is these things need to be independent, is something I think people should be excited about. And I think it's another thing that people in the community should be glad that Austin is leading on, because, you know, I think it's going to be something really unique and different, and I think it's going to really help with the trusts in communities that have been wronged by police and felt they have been wronged by police, if they start seeing different outcomes from this now more strengthened model, if we get Prop C to pass.
Sounds like that's a good place to end on. Appreciate your time, Council Member and Mr. Moore. Thank you for participating and shedding some, some light on this prop, appreciate it.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Good luck with all of your other interviews you'll have to do.
All right.
Take care of each other.
Thank you both, take care.